Good evening. I'd like to reconvene the Town Council meeting for February 18th, 2025 at 7:00. First and foremost, if you'd all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you and welcome. We've got some, as a lot of folks can see, we've got some high school government kids here to learn about the most important government, the government closest to them. And so I'm glad that they're here tonight. We've got a few of them that are going to do some public comment here in just a second. If I can find my little script here. All right. First up is public comment. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak about items that are not on the agenda. The comment period is limited to 30 minutes total time, which is, which is individual is allowed a maximum of three minutes to speak. You must sign up ahead of time in order to comment, and that sign up begins 30 minutes before the start of the meeting. The council will accommodate as many speakers as possible during this time with preference to town residents. But if public comment extends beyond the allotted 30 minutes, Town Council will continue public comment period at the end of the meeting prior to adjourning for those who signed up before the meeting. As any matters raised by individuals during public comment are not on the agenda and other potentially interested parties would not therefore be aware of discussion of these matters, the Town Council will not engage in dialogue regarding any items raised during public comment. With that, it would be my honor to call Rich up first. Rich?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. If you could state your name and address for the record, please.
Sure. Rich Parker, Colorado.
Thank you.
Okay. Adult in the room. Now that we have a breakneck speed fascist coup breaking and killing here and around the world as I speak, and King Trump having already installed his Henpeck Supreme Court justices to overturn women's autonomy, criminalize millions of homeless for their brain-dead right to sleep, and of course, the most sycophantic and partisan of all for a supposed legit impartial highest court, give him absolute immunity from any Nazi, from any Nazi atrocity he so happens to dream up for entertainment and self-aggrandizement. This is now a fight to the last man, woman, and child standing with our own president. The stunningly ignorant, woefully attention-span, vacant, and utter voidance of everything they profess as good, right, decent, and humane. MAGA monsters are fully responsible for this inconceivable nightmare having come to pass. Adult in the room. Never has this nearly 250-year-old country faced such a narrow, a caligula, a scientifically irrefutable psychopath in its presidency, not even close. Every adult over 25 years of age, when the brain fully forms, has absolute right to his/her peaceful euthanasia upon demand for any reason. Not your life, not your say. Otherwise, life is not a gift, not a blessing, not a miracle. It is an open-air prison, thereby being the unassailable reason to not only legalize it countrywide, but to put it in the United States Constitution. What exactly are you afraid of? And Trump and his despicably shamefully greedy billionaire buds are the perfect example of why millions would want to leave this untenable hell realm called sentient human life for which the normies defend imbecilically at all costs. Adult in the room. YouTube admin Tim@sonsofliberty slash, oh, excuse me, and Malcolm Nance to get a whiff of what's necessary to fight this inconceivably dangerous piece of garbage. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rich. All right. And I know that I was adamant in my statement that you had to sign up first. You do not. So students in the room, if there was anybody that wished to make public comment, the time is now.
Good evening, members of the Parker Town Council. My name is Yulia Hughes, and I'm here with Janine Norton. And we are here to express our deep concerns regarding the hazardous road conditions during winter that we face every winter due to snow and ice buildup. As residents of Parker, we have witnessed firsthand how treacherous our roads have become, not only on main roads, but also within neighborhood, neighborhoods. While we recognize and appreciate the town of Parker's snow removal policies, we believe the enhancements are necessary to improve safety and accessibility for all residents. Every winter, accidents increase due to icy roads. Hundreds of accidents occur annually in Parker due to ice, with vehicles sliding through intersections, not being able to stop at stop signs, and sometimes ending them ditches or sidewalks. According to the town's snow plowing priority system, primary roads receive immediate attention while residential streets follow later. However, these delays in clearing neighborhood roads create significant safety concerns. Residents, residents particularly those with smaller vehicles or limited winter driving experience like us, often find it extremely difficult to navigate through these conditions safely. The current response time of snowplows in residential areas needs major improvement. Many residents must commute early in the morning when ice is most dangerous, including us when we have to be at school early in the morning and the roads are in bad conditions. If untreated for extended periods, neighborhood roads become nearly impassable. This not only endangers drivers, but also complicates emergency response efforts. While we understand that major roads must be prioritized, neighborhood streets should also require an adequate time to treatment to prevent hazardous conditions. We urge the Parker Town Council to explore different ideas or enhancements to the current snow removal strategy. This may include increasing the number of snowplows, improving root efficiency, or expanding the use of sand and de-icing treatments in residential areas. While the town currently employs a systematic approach to snow removal, adjusting the timeline or supplementing efforts during extreme weather conditions could greatly reduce risks for residents. The safety, the safety of Parker's residents should be a top priority. We cannot wait until the accidents accumulate before implementing necessary improvements. We ask that the county council review the, its current policies and consider additional measures to enhance efficiency, particularly in neighborhoods where icy conditions are just as dangerous as on main roads. Thank you for your time, and we appreciate your consideration of this important issue.
Excellent. Thank you very much for your testimony. We don't address, obviously, what you bring up. I stated that in my opening statement, I stated that. Sometimes you're lucky. Sometimes the director who'd be in charge of plowing is in the room and he hears things. And so sometimes that director may grab you after the meeting and chat with you, if you guys are willing. All right?
Okay.
Sorry, Tom.
You are allowed to point out that director.
Oh, that director wears, that director wears engineer blue. All right. Thank you. Next up, we have reports, items, and comments from mayor and council. Todd, start with you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, I attended a board meeting with the Parker Senior Center as part of my liaison duties, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ann?
Thank you, Mayor. It's been kind of a slower week. I attended a Greater Parker Foundation study session and meeting on February 7th along with Councilmember Wilkes. And other than that, like I said, it's been kind of quiet.
Said Councilmember Wilkes.
Nothing to report.
Thank you. John?
Thank you. On the 5th, I was part of the Douglas County Transportation Forum Steering Committee meeting. We had a couple of items, presentation, informational items, link-on-demand and the Douglas County Transit and Multimodal Connectivity Update. Again, the DC Transit Multimodal Connectivity Update was addressed in our last study session, so everybody here should have a good understanding of what we reviewed. On the 7th, I attended as the liaison the Town of Parker Investment Advisory Meeting. What that is, we have two, two citizens who have financial experience meet with the town's financial advisor and staff to go over on a, on twice a year, over how the, the monies are invested. And safe to say that things, based on the citizens, things seem to be, be running quite good. On the 13th, I had an E470 board meeting. We had a couple of items, a couple of contracts under engineering and roadway, a couple of entities who are, who are doing work with the authority to, for the expansion and for additional, additional monies on existing contracts. So that is all, Mayor.
Thank you, John. Eric, please.
Nothing to report.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Laura, please.
Nothing for the Town of Parker, but I did attend a couple of board meetings for the Parker Faith Council and the Heroes Hall Foundation. The Heroes Hall Foundation is building a $15 million facility for Douglas County veterans. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Next up, I have a question. Town attorney, as the new guy, I've neglected to mention that we have three public comments that were in print form. Can I enter those now into the record? All right. So council in front of you are three comments from citizens that were printed out or sent in electronically and printed for your perusal. Those will be entered into the record in public comment. Thank you. Next up, we have consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted with one motion and vote. There will be no separate discussion for consent agenda items unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for discussion. Council in front of you are consent agenda items 4A through D. I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
I move to approve consent agenda items 4A through 4D.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Wilkes, second from Hendricks. Council, all in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Any opposed? See none. Consent agenda passes. All right. Next up, we have a public hearing. And again, as a new guy, excuse me while I pull out my script here. All right. I will open the public hearing at 7:12 PM. And the public hearing is for Gladys O'Brien House Used by Special Review Cottage Veterinary Edition. And, sorry. Okay. So with that, we will go to staff.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Again, this is the Gladys O'Brien Cottage Veterinary Hospital Used by Special Review application request. The subject property highlighted in purple is located on the west side of Pike's Peak Drive, south of Main Street. The property is bounded on the north by a private drive and St. Matthew's Episcopal Church, to the east by Pike's Peak Drive and commercial uses, to the south by commercial uses, and to the west by public parking and commercial uses. The applicant, Spiro Veterinary Clinic, the owner of Cottage Veterinary Hospital, is proposing a use by special review for an existing non-conforming veterinary clinic to bring the use into conformance. Their request for the use by special review was submitted because Cottage Veterinary Hospital is proposing an addition to the existing building and expansion into the existing storage garage. The building expansion is currently under review and will be approved administratively. The site is located within the Downtown East Zone District. The building became a veterinary clinic in the mid-1980s after the 1981 incorporation of the town. On October 21st, 2002, the Greater Downtown Pike's Peak Zone District was established and included the Cottage Veterinary Hospital site. This zoning did not permit veterinary clinics, making the clinic a legal non-conforming use. Today, veterinary clinics are permitted as a use by special review under the new zoning Downtown East effective January 26th of 2025. Approval of the use by special review will remove the non-conforming status for the veterinary use, thereby allowing for the use to expand. The property is located within the Main Street master plan area of the town's master plan. The existing cottage veterinary use operates in an existing building and is consistent with other commercial uses on Pike's Peak Drive. The use aligns with the character of the area, supports residents' ability to find services locally, and allows for the growth, growth of an established small business. There are nine criteria used to evaluate a use by special review. These criteria ensure that the use will be compatible with the character of the surrounding areas and neighborhoods, the proposal is consistent with the master plan, and adequate services exist to serve the proposed site. After evaluating the proposal and criteria, staff has determined that the proposal meets the nine criteria set forth in the land development ordinance. The project is consistent with the master plan, and all referral agency comments have been satisfied. Additionally, on February 13th, 2025, the Planning Commission unanimously moved to approve the use by special review application request. Therefore, staff recommends that Town Council approve the Gladys O'Brien House Cottage Veterinary Use Special Review, Use by Special Review. This concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions. The applicant is also present and is available for questions.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the presentation. Council, we will go to staff questions first. Todd?
Do you have an idea how long, assuming this is approved, how long the enhancement will take?
Somewhere between.
Sir, I apologize. We'll save that.
I need to go up?
Yeah, we'll, we'll save, we'll get, staff will bring you up, and then he can ask that same question of you, sir. Appreciate that. Ann, any questions for, Todd, any questions for staff?
I'll pass. I'll wait till, yeah.
Ann, questions for staff?
No, no questions.
Brandy?
How many years has the current cottage vet been in that location?
Well, the building was built in 1913. It's been operating as a veterinary use since the mid-1980s.
Perfect. Thank you.
Any questions for staff?
Nope.
Eric?
No, no questions.
Laura, any questions for staff?
No questions.
All right. With that, I invite the applicant to come up. If you will, sir, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Ted Fawcett, and I'm a Parker resident and the owner of Apple Remodeling.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Todd, I heard you had might have a question.
I think you're right.
All right.
Need more, need more caffeine, kids. Assuming this passes, just curious how long the construction for this enhancement will take, you think?
Approximately eight to 12 months, depending on weather conditions and Murphy's Law.
Thank you. Some Murphy's clause. And we're going to go through the, real quick here, make sure nobody else. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes. So the traffic that would happen, because obviously Pike's Peak, I know right where the cottage vet is. It's a one lane, both ways, and then you have that new three-way stop right there. What, if construction's eight to 12 months, and I know that lot's not very big, what are we looking at for traffic?
I don't think will have an impact. There is a large lot, and we expect all construction vehicles, if they are parked in that area, to be parked onsite on the lot itself. We won't impact the street parking or the onsite parking for people who come up with their pets. So there is, we will coming, we will be coming from the alley onto the property, and there are two entrances to the alley. One would be from Pike's Peak, and then one from the city parking facility behind there.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
John, questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Addition, are you increasing services, or what's the, what's the purpose?
Right now, they're pretty crowded, and it's a small old house. So the idea is to give them a couple more exam rooms so that people don't have to wait so long, and a little bit more office space. There is also going to be in the basement a kennel area for when an animal needs to rest for a while before it can be picked up.
Great. Thank you.
Eric?
No questions.
Laura?
No questions.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Appreciate your time. Next up, we will open public comments for this item at 7:18. Is there any members of the public that wish to address council on this specific item? See none. We'll close public comment at 7:18. And moving on, sorry.
You can go ahead and close the public hearing, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. With that, we will close the public hearing at 7:19 and move on to questions, or I'm sorry, comments from, from Town Council. Todd?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's always good to see small businesses expanding and growing in the town, and I support this. Given this is a use by special review, the Town Council has to consider following factors pursuant to Municipal Code Section 13.03040. There's nine criteria in front of us. I agree with all of them. Specifically, proposed use is consistent with the master plan, which is item number two in the, in the nine criteria. Also, number three, the applicant can demonstrate the pro-size sufficient in size and shape to support the proposed use. So I'm in favor.
Thank you. Ann?
I would also agree that it, this meets the nine criteria, and that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Ann. Councilmember Wilkes?
Yeah, on the nine criteria, number one specifically being in harmony and compatible with the character and the surrounding areas of the neighborhood. I mean, as you stated, this house was built in 1913, so it is one of our foundations in that area. And I think adding just a, an addition onto it that complements it meets the criteria. And you also answered my question about number six, about the undue traffic congestion or traffic hazard. So thank you for that. So I agree.
Excellent. John?
I cannot believe I'm doing this, but I will harness the criteria information from the mayor here. I do believe it meets the nine criteria. Looking specifically at, at number nine, the proposed, one, will not otherwise be detrimental to health, safety, or welfare. It will not, number seven, the proposed use will not create a material environmental impact on the surrounding area of the town or as a whole. And I will leave a few for my people to the left of me.
Councilmember, Councilmember Frinson?
Yeah, so I don't, I don't know how to build on, on all of that.
They're going quick, Eric. You might want to grab a couple.
They are going quick. So apologies to Laura. So, you know, I, I am in agreement with my fellow council members. You know, this does meet the nine criteria. The, the criteria I thought was most, most pertinent here to me was that this is not going to cause an undue capital improvement. The town is not included in our plan, right? This is not going to cost the town money to do any improvements here. So I am in support.
And lastly, Councilwoman have to take us away.
Just touching upon a few criteria here. Criteria number two, the proposed use is consistent with the master plan. Thank you for that. Is, it is consistent with the master plan of 2022. Criteria number three, the proposed site is sufficient in size and shape to support the proposed use. And the applicant wrote up a very good summary of their findings on that, as well as staff. The current 1350 square foot building sits on 17,290 square foot lot and will expand 657 feet to the current building footprint. Thank you on that. Criteria number four, we, Councilmember Frinson went over that. Criteria number five, there is no requirement of community facilities and level of community services greater than those available from the town or applicable service providers. So no additional facilities will be required. We went over the adequate pedestrian, bicycle, and vehicular asset access on criteria number six. And criteria number seven, we don't have any additional material environmental impacts on the surrounding area or the town as a whole, on the mitigation of environmental impacts to the extent practical. There's no environmental impact. No additional noise will be created by the expansion, and all gases in the facility will be dedicated and locked with sprinklers installed. I want to also thank the applicant for your dedicated service to the Town of Parker, these many years providing this service, and your expansion as well, and your professionalism in your application. Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Thank you very much, council. With that, I would, let's see, I would entertain a motion.
I move to approve, based on staff findings, with the following conditions contained in the staff report. Number one, the use by special review materials submitted to the Community Development Department on December 31st, 2024 shall be approved, use by special review materials.
I have a motion. Do I have a second, please?
I'll second.
I have a second from, I have a motion from Todd, I have a second from Eric. Todd, how do you vote?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Brandy?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
Laura?
Yes.
And that passes six to zero. Thank you very much for your time. Amber, well done. Thank you, sir. Next up is ordinances, section six. In front of us tonight is ordinance number 9.384 on second reading. A bill for an ordinance to approve the intergovernmental agreement by and between the Town of Parker and Parker Water and Sanitation District regarding cost sharing for improvements to Stro Road. Mr. Claus, take it away, sir.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Here to present to you an intergovernmental agreement with Parker Water and Sanitation District for the Stro widening project. So the town has been contemplating the widening and repair of Stro Road between J. Morgan Boulevard and Matzenbacher Crowfoot Valley Road over Cherry Creek for quite some time now. The project also includes the extension of J. Morgan Boulevard to the south to connect to the South Metro Fire Station, and the construction contract is targeted to be approved at Town Council meeting in March. So a little bit of background on this one. Parker Water and Sanitation District approached the town in the fall of 2024 to coordinate the installation of a new effluent water line across Stro Road. The new water line is anticipated to be installed starting at the Parker Water Regional Pond north of Hess Road and run south along Cherry Creek, ultimately crossing Stro diagonally to connect to an existing line located on the Parker Water property on the south side of Stro Road. A request was made for a portion of the water line crossing Stro Road to be installed by the contractor selected to widen Stro Road. An intergovernmental agreement is being proposed to address the terms of the installation. Here's the vicinity map. It's not showing up very well here, but nonetheless, we've got Stro Road, and then Stro Soccer Park to the north of that. Cherry Creek, as you can see, kind of runs down the middle. J. Morgan is to the east of, of this image here. A little bit more background, too. Town staff coordinated with Parker Water staff on the details of the new water line installation. The new water line will be a 24-inch ductile iron pipe encased in flow fill to prevent future settling of the roadway. Parker Water hired HDR to complete the design of the water line. Parker Water staff asked that the town include the water line installation in the road project bid to reduce the impact of the area with multiple consecutive projects. The town and Parker Water have done similar work on other town capital improvement projects in the past. A separate bid schedule was included in the Stro widening project bid reflecting HDR's design. A bid opening for Stro widening project will take place in early March, as I said. And the bid schedule for the total, for the water line work will be presented to Parker Water for approval. Parker Water will then pay the town within 30 days of notification that the town has awarded the bid for the project. And then if there's a cost savings, Parker Water will be reimbursed. If there's additional costs incurred, Parker Water will pay the amount to the town within 30 days' notice. Here's a graphic of the water line installation. As you can see, it, it passes diagonally across Stro Road. The proposed design, we're looking to do an open cut, and it's going to be phased with, the first half being installed with the widening of the road to the south. Then when we do the reconstruction to the north, install the second phase of the water line. This is going to be pretty significant cost savings for Parker Water as opposed to having to tunnel underneath Stro Road and following the Stro widening project and multiple contractors coordinating at the same time. A little bit more background, too, on this. The installation of the water line across Stro Road will not require any additional easements. However, Parker Water is requesting easements from the town along Cherry Creek to the north. In addition, to successfully complete this Stro widening project, the town must utilize the Parker Water property on the south side of Stro to construct the new bridge over Cherry Creek. The Parker Water property will also be needed to utilize for construction staging, and additional drainage and access easements are needed from Parker Water property to secure improvements incorporated with the Stro widening project design. This IGA will also allow for the exchange of easements and right-of-way to take place. Here's proposed easements. The vicinity map, as you can see, the giant, large, red, I guess, shape. I area. And then, as you can see, in order to access the bridge to the east, we would have to go through Parker Water's property that is through Cherry Creek. So in summary, Parker Water wants the town to handle a portion of the water line installation as part of the Stro widening capital improvement project. Parker Water hired HDR, excuse me, to complete the design and provided it to the town to include in the bid documents. Separate bid schedule was utilized as part of the Stro widening bid. Parker Water will pay the town within 30 days of notification of award. The town needs to grant easements to Parker Water for the water line installation north of Stro. Parker Water needs to grant temporary construction easements, permanent easements, and right of way to the town for the Stro widening project. An intergovernmental agreement is being proposed to summarize this arrangement. Parker Water will execute the IGA, easements and right of way if approved tonight, and ordinance is required to approve the IGA. And I'll open up to questions.
Thank you, sir. Well done. Laura, you want to take us away?
No questions.
Thank you. Eric, any questions for staff?
No questions.
John?
I have none, thank you.
Brandy?
No, thank you.
Anne?
You answered my questions, thank you.
Todd?
No questions.
Just a couple for me. Any chance that this water line is causing us the need to widen the road?
No, it is not. I wish. Wish that was the case. No, it's long overdue. And this is just a way to help, we can help Parker Water out in the meantime.
So, and I saw in there on one of your bullet points that any additional costs will be handled, so there is escalation clause if something crazy goes on. Parker Water is going to be covering that cost for the citizens.
Correct, yeah. They're aware that, you know, this is publicly bid, opening for the project and lowest bidder and whatever the bid numbers come in at, they can either accept the cost or they can decline and not pay, and we end up not installing the water line. Kind of, as Jim Maloney calls it, a self-destruct clause in the agreement, so.
And then, lastly, the need to install a water line, does that change the groups that are looking at this, the construction groups that are looking at this? Does that complicate the project or is this a normal, everyday thing?
No, not necessarily, because we're installing a sanitary line in addition to this, or with this project as well, which we have to follow Parker Water standards for those as well. So the contractor should be familiar with installing pipe and that sort of thing with, you know, this particular project. So it shouldn't limit the contractors that are interested in it. And if it would, too, they would be able to hire an easy pipe installation contractor to be able to handle the work as for specialty. So it shouldn't limit who's interested in the project.
Okay, excellent. Thank you for that. Closes questions. Next, I will open up public comment at 7:31. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address counsel on this specific item? Seeing none, we will close public comment at 7:31 and bring it back for comments and/or debate. Laura?
Well, just to break it down for some of our guests in the audience this evening. When governments do business with one another, it's a little bit different from two private companies doing business. The towns coordinate with each other, and so in this case, the town of Parker is a government entity, and Parker Water and Sanitation is also a type of public entity as well. Instead of a contract, they have an intergovernmental agreement to apply, and they write down the specifics of this agreement in that document. And they formalize that agreement, much like a contract, but it's an intergovernmental agreement. It also outlines a timeline of the project. And the project has to be bid out to contractors. So the governments are not performing the work, they're bidding it out, which means there's a competitive process to this matter. So a number of companies will apply through a bid, and then a bid is selected. So the town has to grant easements, and Parker Water and Sanitation have to grant easements to one another to get the work done. And Parker Water, in this case, is going to cover the costs, so that's great for the town of Parker. And there's always a timeline for the project, and it's always included who's going to pay as well. So just to update you a little bit on how government entities do business with one another as opposed to private companies doing business with one another.
Thank you, councilmember Hefta. Mr. Frinson, any comments?
None. No, I think this is pretty straightforward.
Mr. Dyak?
No questions or comments. Or any of that at this point in time.
Ms. Wilks?
No, thank you for the presentation.
Ms. Berington?
Yeah, thank you. Great job.
And Mr. Hendricks?
Just growing your empire, Tom, of infrastructure improvements. That's pretty cool to see, but thank you for the presentation.
Yeah, this is obviously much needed, especially with what's coming online down south. Well done, I know we've been after it for a while and budget woes and this and that, but we're well prepared now, and I'm glad that the forethought to not cut the road up twice, truly appreciated. I know that drives citizens nuts when we get a brand-new road or something paved, and the next thing you know, they've got sawing trenches out there. So, well done. Counsel, I would entertain a motion for the ordinance number 9.384, please.
I move to approve ordinance number 9.384 on second reading.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion from Wilks, I have a second from Hefta. Todd?
Yes.
Anne?
Yes.
Wilks?
Aye.
John?
Yes.
Eric?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Thank you very much, Nathan, appreciate your time. Next, in front of us, section seven, contracts over $500,000. The Lincoln Avenue and Jordan Road widening, CIP 22-020, construction management, inspection, and material testing in the amount of 2.261,188. Take it away, sir. Patrick, we haven't seen you in a while.
It's been a while. Good evening, mayor and council. This is a contract for construction management, inspection, and material testing services for the Lincoln Avenue and Jordan Road widening project. Brief background on the project, it's, the town has been preparing to widen Lincoln Avenue between Keystone Boulevard and Parker Road for at least the past two decades. It is an important component of Parker's long-term roadway transportation plan, and it's aimed to alleviate congestion within and around the town. Couple of years ago, beginning in 2021, the town executed IGAs with Douglas County for design funding. Most recently, in October 2024, a new IGA was executed with Douglas County for construction funding, with the county providing $9 million towards the cost of the project. During the time since the project started, town council has approved multiple purchase and sale agreements, starting in July of 2024 through January of 2025, that were necessary to acquire the right of way and easements that are needed for the construction project. The bid opening for the construction project was just a few hours ago. We are currently reviewing those bids, and we'll bring that contract to you on March the 3rd. I guess a teaser for that one is, we did receive five bids, and they did come in under the engineer's estimate. So we'll figure out what the final number is and bring that to you at the next meeting. This is a vicinity map of the construction project, Lincoln running east-west. The project starts just to the west of Keystone Boulevard, runs east to Parker Road, and then there's a component on Jordan Road that will run from Stonegate Parkway up to Lincoln Avenue. So when projects go to construction, the town Engineering Public Works Department will utilize consultants for construction management, inspection, and material testing. This is typical, and it's something we'll utilize on this project. In November 18th, the town publicly advertised a request for qualifications with a deadline to respond by December 13th. We received two responses. Selection committee reviewed the proposals. We held interviews with the two consultants, and at the end of that, we scored and agreed that Alfred Benish was the most qualified consultant to perform these services for this project. A scope of work was negotiated with Benish based on the estimated $30 million construction cost. Benish will be utilizing a subconsultant for their material testing services, with construction management and inspection services being handled by Benish staff. The cost for these services is $2,261,888, which is approximately 7.5% of the estimated construction cost. This is in line with industry standards and is an expected number given the construction contract amount. So the town has worked with Benish on several capital projects in recent years. I think most recently, our large Transfelt Extension project, Benish was our CM consultant on that one. We have worked with their lead project team. We're anticipating a cohesive team between the town and Benish. The fee proposal from Benish was in line with industry norms, and it's appropriate for the scope of the project, and staff recommends award of this contract. And with that, if you have any questions?
Thank you, sir. Todd, I'll go to you first. Questions for staff?
So you received two responses. Is that historically lower than normal, or?
It varies. I know we've got, just speaking of Stro Road, I think we got four responses on CM services for that one. I don't think two is unusual, but it's pretty typical, two to four, right in that range.
Better than just one, so.
Indeed.
Thank you.
My question was going to be, is 7.5% in line with similar projects? And you answered that already, thanks.
Ms. Brandy?
I don't have any questions, thank you.
John?
What is the industry standard range on these types of services?
It'll vary. I would say on a project of this size and scope, anywhere from 7% to 10%, even wouldn't be too abnormal. It depends on the client, so, you know, if we're looking at CDOT, what they're paying for CM services, they're paying a premium, so we can typically get a couple percent lower. But, yeah, somewhere between 6% and 8%, 7% and 10%, somewhere in there.
And to piggyback on councilmember Hendricks, I know you always want more, more people to bid, the more the better, because it helps provide a good, a good, solid decision. When you get to the ones and the twos, you know, you have one or two construction firms submitting, how does the selection committee identify that that's a good number? Or what is the process to make sure that the amounts you see are reasonable for us to, for that stuff to be brought to us to counsel for?
Yeah, so this is professional services, so we're, when they're submitting their proposals, we're not looking at prices, we're looking at qualifications. And so that's how we're selecting the firm that we go with. We want to, we want to go with the best firm that can provide the best services for our project. So they submit the proposal, we review the information that they provide, their staff, their background, previous projects. Since we scored both firms very close, we did decide to do in-person interviews, so we brought them in, let them talk a little more specifically about the project, how they would handle things. And so that's how the firm is selected. Once, once we select one, then we negotiate scope and fee with them. We give them our expectations for the project as far as how much testing we're expecting, how many hours we're expecting them to be on-site, and then they provide the fee for that. There is a, if for some reason we got a feedback that was just unusually high, or, you know, kind of out of line of what those industry norms are, we could go back to them, negotiate that down, or move to the next consultant that submitted. But in this case, we do feel that the fee and scope they provided is sufficient and suitable.
Great, thank you.
Eric?
Do we yet, so I had, everybody kind of asked the questions, they were looking at my notes. Timeline of completion, do we know what that is yet? Rough estimate?
Yeah, so we are putting in the, the construction contract end date is the end of October 2026, I believe the date is, right there, give or take a month, but I believe that was the date that we're setting.
Perfect. And when would it start?
So we're planning to bring the contract before council on the 3rd. We would get a notice to proceed to the contractor roughly within three to four weeks after that. I would expect you would probably see contractor mobilize sometime around mid to late April.
And then if they're operating, standard operating hours of when they're out there, and maybe this isn't up for discussion yet, but just certainly curious, when would the work be performed?
Yeah, so we do have hours that they're not require, or that they are allowed construction. It's typically if they're on the roadway impacting traffic, I believe it's 9 to 3 is our standard hours that we have in the, in the contract documents. There may be some times where we will be outside of that. There will be a little bit of night work that will coordinate and figure out when that will fall, but typically it's, it will be 9 to 3.
Okay. Perfect, that's all I had. Thank you.
Laura, please.
Yes, and then historically, for, how long has this project actually been contemplated to get to this point?
Well, before my time, but I've been, I've been told it's been around 20 years, that it's, it's been known since the beginning that it was going to have to be widened to six lanes, and it was really just a matter of when the traffic volumes finally got to the point where it needed to be done. So it's, it's something that was, that was in the minds of some of these guys that have been here for 20-plus years, they've been thinking about forever, and we're just finally to the point where, where it's needed and it makes sense to do.
Thank you.
Excellent. And then my only question, and I know the answer, and have for 17 years with Mr. Forte, Johnny, and whatnot, but Benish, we've done work with them before, and quality firm. And again, it's not just one person, Albert Benish, this is an entire firm, correct?
It is.
And they've done work with us recently?
Yes.
Any project you care to name?
Transfelt Extension, they are a construction manager for that project.
Excellent. Thank you very much. One item of note, there's a discrepancy on the presentation, the last three digits on the number were 888. Our packet says 188. So you have to find $700, I'm sorry.
I noticed that as well.
All right, is there public comment on contracts? I apologize. Is there public comment on contracts?
Yes.
Excellent. I would open up public comment at 7:45. If there's any member of the public that wishes to address counsel on this item. Seeing none, we'll close public comment at 7:45 and bring it back to council for comments. Any comments, counsel? Todd?
Once again, Tom, it's, it's cool to see all these projects, infrastructure projects come along online. These past recent years has been like a renaissance, and these next couple of years, too. So it's getting to, I guess, full-built-out, as it were. So it's good to see, and thank you for the presentation, and I'm in support.
Anne?
Yeah, and I also appreciate the fact that it's not always based on just strictly price, because your lowest bidder is not always your best. And just like in our real estate world, the highest offer is not always the best. So I appreciate you looking out for us, and I'm in support of this.
Excellent, thank you, Anne. Brandy?
Yeah, I just, I think you guys have done an amazing job, and like our mayor said, this is a long time coming, so thanks for all the work.
Mr. Transportation, Dyak?
Yeah, no, this is, I mean, I can be redundant, but, you know, this is, this is probably one of the last couple bigger projects of note. We have this, we have Stro and Crowfoot, unless Parker Road and CDOT, unless CDOT wants to engage in a conversation about major improvements on Parker Road, we're getting down to the nubs, if you will, on, on major infrastructure. So it's always good to see, see things like this. We're at the front end of it, like, like this is articulated. We'll be getting a contract for construction, and people are going to be letting us know, they're going to be waiting on Lincoln here, I think, this summer. But, you know, I think that's a good thing, because once, once we're done, we'll have a better road and less congestion, and hopefully happier citizens. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Eric?
Yeah, generally don't have a lot more to add to these guys, but I do appreciate that this was a competitive bid. We picked a firm that we know and has performed well for us, is the town. I think the fee's in line, as you noted. Timeline of completion is fantastic. Certainly, any ability to accelerate is great, but let's get it done right. And I'm in support, nothing else I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Laura?
And just again, for our guests tonight, as a town grows, roads have to be widened, roads have to be constructed. Road have, roads have to be constructed. Roads have to be improved. And so, as our population grows in Parker, we have to engage in these activities as a town. And sometimes, when these presentations come to us, we also, Patrick also has his boss in the room tonight. So, for when you're going to be a future government employee or in the private industry, you're going to have your boss watching you sometimes, too. And so, Tom is in the back room, and under the careful tutelage of Tom, Patrick has done a wonderful job. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Counsel, I would entertain a motion, please.
I move to approve the staff recommendation as part of the regular agenda.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
I have a motion from Mr. Dyak, second from Ms. Barrington. Todd?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Anne, Wilks, sorry.
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Franson?
Aye.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously. Counsel, before we adjourn, I just want to ask that, oh, I see another Franson in the background there. What's up, buddy? I just want to ask that we all stick around. We're going to have the kids divide up, and we'll all get a couple kids that can ask questions. Students, I would advise that you probably have about 10, 15 minutes left. If you are going to get a ride, go ahead and get them summoned and get you, get you waiting out, getting them waiting outside. So, staff, or counsel, if you would, we are adjourned at 7:50. Stick around, and we're going to probably move down there. I'm not sure what our plan is.